Introduction, I want to state that this special board meeting is to consider a policy KE complaint. The complaint was filed on January 5th, 2024 by Sarah Smith on Form KE-1. It lists Sarah Smith and Juan Garcia as the complainants. Their complaint requests the following. One, that the committee pool selected by the school board be thrown out, and that a new pool of names be created by the school board. Two, that the review committee pool be composed of people who are randomly chosen to represent the overall community, not just one specific viewpoint. And three, that the process be undertaken with clear guidance and oversight. All board members have been provided with a copy of the complaint, the attachments submitted with the complaint, policies KEC and KEF, and regulations KEC-R and KEF-R. The complaint generally references several school board members and specifically names Patrick Nolan as not having acted in good faith in selecting committee members. These charges have also been made by Ms. Smith and Mr. Garcia during the public comment portion of board meetings. Because the board does not respond to public comment, no individual board member has had an opportunity to respond to the statements made against them individually. The agenda allows for respondent presentations. I want to give any board member the opportunity to address the complaint from the floor as a respondent. If you choose to exercise that option, I also ask that you remain on the floor and recuse yourself from board discussion and action. Does any board member wish to address the complaint from the floor as a respondent?
I do.
Okay, let the record show that Patrick Nolan is recusing himself and will be speaking from the floor as a respondent.
President Tenorio.
Mr. Wofford?
I would like to do the same.
Okay, let the record show that Mr. Wofford will also recuse himself and be a respondent from the floor. Finally, I want to remind everyone in the room that I am the presiding officer of this meeting. And do not speak, please do not speak unless I have recognized you and given you the floor and direct all questions and comments to me. At this point, we have the presentations, complainants. Sarah Smith, Juan Garcia, you have a total of 10 minutes. Thank you, Colin. When you start, we'll have the clock go.
Board President, Members Superintendent, is there corruption on the LCPS board? I don't think so, but there is an integrity and bias problem. A citizen parent filed a complaint on a book that for most reasonable parents would be age inappropriate. The expectation of citizens is for the LCPS administration and school board to handle complaints seriously such as this with integrity, honesty, objectivity, and fairness, not to mention impartiality. You are the personnel parents entrusted with establishing policies leading to a good, solid education of their children. On 20 April, 2023, Mr. Nolan first took the oath of office as a school board member where he stated in part to faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a LCPS board member. On 12 October, Mr. Nolan bragged to his colleague that committee should be pretty stacked with anti-book banners. You can feel the disdain towards ordinary citizens who don't share his views that include, in my opinion, the normalization of all types of sex to include pedophilia as demonstrated by his unwavering support of a book that promotes this type of material and behavior. What is Mr. Nolan going to do if another book is challenged? The oath was kicked to the floor and put in the trash can. The issue is no longer inappropriate material maintained in the school libraries, but the integrity of the board. How many other times has Mr. Nolan, quote, "stacked"? Mr. Wofford also showed a dislike for common citizens and parents who oppose his agenda by labeling us as banners. Why was there a need to stack the committee? Was it a concern the review committee would actually vote to classify the book as age inappropriate? Then what would happen? Would the board then push the superintendent to reverse the committee decision? Would the board receive political pressure to intervene since Mr. Nolan and his political allies couldn't afford to have less excuses, actually stand up and label this book as, quote, "age inappropriate"? I don't know. Those were questions. It is evident Mr. Nolan was not confident he would get his way, so he adequately, quote, "stacked" the committee with anti-book banners. With no chance the mission of the ALA, that's the American Library Association, and his would be impacted. Material like this doesn't prepare our kids for a medical, legal profession, or even how to be a plumber or carpenter, but it does provide tips and encouragement on how to be good sluts, and that's straight from the book. Boys and girls, when we started presenting our concerns, we discovered there is no provision to screen what our kids are exposed to in the school libraries. Parents entrust their kids to you when the bus comes by every morning to pick them up. Instead, we may have librarians at LCPS who, in my opinion, are beholden to the American Library Association. This is a quote from the ALA, from the ALA Bill of Rights. And I quote, "The American Library Association opposes all attempts to restrict access to library services, materials, and facilities based on the age of library users, minors." So basically, there is no such thing as age inappropriate material in our school libraries. And I continue with a quote. Librarians and librarians have an obligation, obligation to resist efforts that systematically exclude materials dealing with any subject matter. So the ALA is a union, organization, is telling the librarians, is telling you what kind of material to have, and that the librarians have an obligation to resist any efforts with any subject matter. So does the ALA expect, demand, that anything and everything be allowed in the school libraries? Is there material on bomb-making? Or how to build a weapon? Or how to manufacture illegal drugs? That's a question that the school board should be able to answer. And I continue with a quote. Young adult literature is generally described as books written for an audience of 12 to 20. 12 to 20, that's what, 6th grade? 7th grade? 12 to 20-year-olds. It may also include books primarily written for adults, books written for adults which may have appeal to younger readers. So we're basically saying we could have adult material, and if a 12-year-old wants to look at it, read it, see it, enjoy it, they can. This is straight from the ALA's Bill of Rights. In closing my comments, I recommend the following. Disband the current book review committee. Number two, establish a random selection process to activate a review committee when needed. Number three, establish a screening process to review educational material based on community standards. And number four, establish a process to hold school board members who ignore their oath accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Board President Tenorio, School Board, and Superintendent Ruiz. Your district policy allows parents and concerned community members to challenge books in your schools. Per your policy, whenever there is a complaint filed against a book, you as a school board are to create a pool of 20 parents and teachers who can potentially serve on a committee to review the book. That committee pool will then be in place for the remainder of the school year. We expect you to handle such complaints with integrity and in good faith. Furthermore, your oath of office requires you to, quote, "faithfully and impartially perform your school board duties." It is clear that the recent book complaint against the Jack of Hearts and Other Parts book was not handled with integrity. You have the evidence showing that Board Member Nolan purposely ensured that the book review committee would be, quote, "stacked" against concerned parents regardless of the content of the book. Besides ensuring that the names of the activists were included in the committee pool, he even asked the Mayfield librarian to recommend people for the committee. Considering that the librarian was the person who would be presenting evidence in favor of keeping the book, this was the equivalent of allowing the defendant in a trial to choose the jury members. And in fact, the evidence shows that two of the people on the book review committee were recommended by the librarian from Mayfield. This turned the whole book review process into a charade with a predetermined outcome. We are asking you now to do the right thing by discarding the stacked pool of names and instead create a new pool of potential book review committee members. This process needs to be undertaken with clear guidance and oversight so the same thing does not happen again. Furthermore, we're asking you to update and change your district policy to ensure that the committee pool is unbiased and not chosen to represent only one specific viewpoint. The policy as it stands now is clearly broken. It has no safeguards to make sure that the committee pool represents our community as a whole. You owe it to the parents and your constituents to take action now to correct the situation by creating a new randomly chosen, unbiased book review committee in accordance with your oath of office and your standards for ethical conduct.
Respondents, please hold your applause. Respondents, I was gonna offer a Q and A from the board to you all. Board members, if you have any questions, please limit your answer to one minute. Any questions?
I really don't think we're beholden to the American Library Association. Yeah, I mean, just because they have some guidelines or whatever, I forget how you refer to it, but that doesn't mean that we in any way, or in any way, would be obligated to follow any of it. So I think the decisions we make are, you know, we're responsible for them, and it's certainly not the ALA, and we're certainly not just blindly following them.
Let me rephrase what I was gonna say, because I didn't see it clearly. Any questions for clarification?
Sorry.
It's okay, I didn't explain. I don't have any questions.
No, I don't have any questions either.
I don't have any questions either.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wofford, Mr. Nolan, if you would like to confer with each other how to use the 10 minutes?
Hi, everybody. I'm more used to being on this side of the dais than anything. Let me start off by saying where I think there's some agreement on the topic at hand today. This is a broken policy, right? It's a policy that did not serve this community well. It didn't serve either of the parties well. I totally agree on that. That being said, what I'm hearing today is not necessarily any evidence of us not following the policy, but more, again, the same arguments that we've heard around taking this book back, or sorry, removing this book from the shelf. And I want to share a little bit about sort of the process, right? Because we've been hearing a lot about this at public comment, we can't respond. So this is my opportunity to sort of respond to some of these things, and really, a peek behind the curtains, if you will. So late August, I think we were given the directive to build this committee of 16 people. I want to just, each board member, 16 people. I want to stress like the difficulty of doing that, right? Getting 16 people to volunteer for anything is very challenging and very difficult. People knowing what district they are in is very difficult. And as a new board member, I didn't know these schools, I didn't know these communities super well, right? So there's a big learning curve that comes with a lot of this. So the first thing I did, and we were given no resources, no information, we weren't given a list of parents at schools, we weren't given a list of teachers necessarily, right? I don't even know if we have access to any of that information. So what I did is I shared it on Facebook, on my personal Facebook, made it public. That first share, and it was, you know, it's part of the IPRA request, so the folks here have it, was, hey, we need folks for a book review committee from such and such school email me at pNolan@lcps.net, and left it really there. From there, that got shared 15 times. And I'm not a super big Facebooker, right, but 15 times. Half of those are folks I don't know, right? So it got out there into the world, into the universe that I don't interact with or know very well. So word got out. It was the best way that I knew how to get that word out. And then word of mouth, right, conversations. I am a person in this community, I have relationships, people ask me about things, I know people, word of mouth. And that is how I built my committee. And I want to just, the committee that I submitted with the 16 people, I know two of them. I do not know the politics of these people, I do not know where they stand on a lot of these issues. What we, our guidance was, you know, parents from elementary and middle and high school, and then for staff too as well. And so of those 16 people, I know two of them well. Well, sorry, one of them well, and one not so well. We sort of run in the same nonprofit circle. So I did not know who the people were on my committee. I did not know their thoughts on this process. What I did know is that they offered to me enough information to say that they were experts in their field. And my thinking was, if you're a staff person, if you're a teacher, you are an expert in this field. For parents, it was very much harder, it was very hard to sort of ascertain if they were experts in this field, right? And so honestly, if a parent signed up and reached out, they're on my list. And you will see this on the latest IPRA request. Every single person that reached out to me at pNolan@lcps.net made it onto my list. With the exception of two people, that was a phone, one was a phone call and one was a text message. So 16 people, I said no, didn't absolutely know one, with the exception of like, you know, there were people that were not parents or they weren't staff, so not eligible, right? So I told those folks no. Regarding the librarian, yes, true, right? I did reach out to that person. Again, stressing that at the time, I did not know that they were going to be in this hearing. I don't think any of us knew what that process was gonna look like at that time. So I did not know. Honestly, what I thought was it's gonna be like the head of librarians or the director of librarians. I don't even know if we have that at LCPS. But that was my thinking. I was thinking it was gonna be somebody from central office, not the actual librarian themselves. Because perhaps they didn't pick the book, right? Perhaps they were the librarian there for a year, and it was there when they got there, right? So yes, I reached out to the librarian, because Mayfield is in my school district, and so I needed teachers, right? I needed parents. I needed to fill that list of 16 people. I also, it wasn't mentioned today, but I want to just sort of flag the activist piece of this, right? What we're kind of saying is that if somebody has a pride flag or if somebody expresses support for the LGBTQ community, that they should not be allowed to be in this committee. That violates LCPS policy and probably a number of laws. I'm not a legal expert, right? But is that what we're saying when we say that somebody that houses a pride flag on their Facebook profile is not allowed to be in this committee? Or if they're progressive or they're an activist, does that mean they are not allowed to be a member of this committee? That is civic engagement. We should not be pickers and choosers of who participates in our civic systems and engages with our political systems. So again, just to really stress, of my 16 people, I really did not know any of them. One mentioned that they taught at, sorry, not UNM, at MSU, Department of Education. Boom, expert in their field, probably, right? So they made it onto my committee list. And that was my thought process around this, right? And I think board members here may, you know, the task of getting 16 people was really difficult and challenging. And so I'll leave it at that, and thank you.
Colin, please hold the time. I want to speak directly to the audience that you're getting loud while he's speaking, and when the complainants were sharing their 10 minutes, everybody was respectful. I'm gonna ask the same from you. Please withhold your reactions, and please be quiet while they're speaking. Thank you.
President Tenorio, do you want to speak before you ask questions? Thank you, Mr. Nolan, for your remarks this evening. Especially your pointing out that the package of information that they gave us for tonight's hearing included several people's Facebook pages on which LGBTQ support was identified by having pride colors or something there. As though, because I heard the audience sneer at that, that was clearly a factor in their minds for why people cannot be objective. My sense is that elections have results and that we followed the regulations. We were charged with finding people and figuring out where they live, what their relationship was in terms of their students who are teaching, and getting them onto a list of people in very short order. In the package of information the IPRA gave, I think there were three or four names there, none of which ended up on my list. But they had pictures of pride flags on their Facebook pages for us to see. Although in public comments and in their presentations, they said this had nothing to do with LGBTQ literature, that it was simply vulgar. I thought we were following policy, I honestly did, by finding people who I thought would reflect a fair and unbiased approach to weighing the matter before them. That they would not come in with no knowledge whatsoever, but they would have some sense of Supreme Court ruling and how to interpret the law and how to interpret our regulations. So stacked may be an unfortunate word. I think the word banner, banner was the word that either Mr. Garcia or Ms. Smith said I used. I did not realize that that was a derisive term. I thought it was a descriptive one. If it is extremely derisive to them, well, then I apologize. But to ban books from schools is what I saw the action as. They have a misreading of the Supreme Court's ruling on this, I think. And then also, there seems to be a belief system that experts in our field, the American Library Association, I assume the International Reading Association, National Council of Teachers of English, members of education colleges or universities, that these people are somehow biased. They are experts in our fields. They're people like the librarian. These are people we trust and go to for advice regarding books in our libraries. And so I do not understand that our trust in these people was somehow misplaced. There is the appearance of impropriety, which is why I recused myself from the hearing today. Because Mr. Nolan and I particularly have been subjected to many public comments impugning our reputation, our ability to measure what is before us, look at the regulations, look at the policies, and make an unbiased decision. And so because of that, I thought I would step aside so I could talk to you today from the floor rather than take a vote in this manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wofford and Mr. Nolan. Board members, are there any questions for clarity's purpose?
Six seconds.
I have none.
No question.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Given that at the heart of this complaint is looking at policy and regulation, I invited our board council to review policies KEF and KEC and the implementation of regulations KEF-R and KEC-R. Hi, Ms. Gallegos.
Good evening, President Tenorio, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the policies and their implementing regulations this evening. That will be the sole focus of my discussion. And as you can see, Colin has kindly taken the PowerPoint that I walked in with this evening and has it on the screen. It's a short PowerPoint, but I do want to point out some significant issues that I think the board needs to consider as it thoughtfully makes the decision going forward. And so again, my focus is on the policy and the regulations and the alignment of those. It's not about the various factual allegations that have been raised, but the policy and the regulations in relationship to the specific relief that has been requested, which is also reflected in the potential actions that the board may take tonight. So a couple of things on the first slide, before we even go beyond the first slide, I want to bring your attention to is the title of the regulations which also match the title of the policy. So we have KEF and KEC and their regulations, KEF-R and KEC-R. And as you can see, just from the first slide, that KEF's focus is on concerns/complaints about curriculum, library materials, instructional activities, or presentations. And so when you glance at that title and compare it to KEC, which is public concerns, complaints about library resources, it appears, at least at some level, that KEF is curricular in nature. In other words, the things that all students would via instruction on the curriculum be subjected to, where library resources may include things that a student could elect to expose themselves to, but wouldn't necessarily be required to, that optional piece of do I want to check out that book and read it, or do I not? Versus the curricular piece where all students who are recipients of that curriculum would be subjected to that. So that's one of the things I want you to pay attention to as you consider these two regulations and their related policies. So just a historical point. First of all, you know, when you look at the history, you see that both the policies and the regulations are quite dated. It is 2024, and KEF was adopted as a policy on June 15th, 2010. And what is typical, as you know, is that the policy gets adopted and then a regulation to implement the policy gets written by the administration and then approved by the administration. And so what you see with KEF is it followed that expected sequence. It was adopted on June 15th, 2010, and then the administration generated a policy and they approved that policy on June 21st, 2010, pretty much immediately after the adoption of the policy. KEC took a little bit of an interesting, different route. It was approved by the board on May 20th, 2008. But the regulation, it appears, at least from the published regulation, that it was actually approved by the administration prior to the adoption of the policy. So what we don't know, and it may or may not be relevant, is whether or not, once the final policy was issued by administration, whether they ever went back to review the regulation to make sure it aligned with the policy. And this is kind of a nice opportunity to point out which supersedes the other. So a regulation, you know, much like federal law and state law, under federal law, we have federal statute. And then the implementing agency is charged with implementing or developing a regulation and issuing a regulation that complies with, that fulfills what the statute requires. It tends to be more elaborate, but it still has to fall within the confines of the statute. It has to fulfill what the intent is, not only the wording, but the intent of the statute. So that's how federal law works. You have federal statute, you have federal regulation. State statute works the same way, except in New Mexico, we, instead of saying regulation, we have what we call rules. We have the New Mexico Administrative Code, and we have state statute. The legislature passes statutes, and then the role of the implementing agency is to issue rules under the New Mexico Administrative Code. And the task of that rule is to fulfill the wording and the meaning of that statute, not go beyond it, not violate it, but simply fulfill it. So, you know, it does raise a question. If the regulation was written ahead of the policy, maybe it was done in anticipation of the final outcome, because of course, as board members know, it goes through several readings. But it does raise a question whether perhaps somehow that regulation never got updated. So, and policies should ultimately be looked at holistically. I mean, you wouldn't have one policy that is used to undermine another policy. So just like laws, when you have laws that appear to conflict, then one of the rules of interpretation when you have a statute, for example, two statutes that appear to conflict, is that in interpreting them, you seek to reconcile them. So if they conflict in ways that don't make sense, you attempt to reconcile them. And so one of the things- And so one of the things that I think is important that this board consider as it weighs, what it is that the complainants are asking you to do today. They've given their reasons, the respondents have given reasons that, in terms of responding to the factual allegations. But in looking at what it is that ultimately you're being asked to decide as far as the regulations, I think it's important to look at what each policy, not the regulation, but what each policy, because remember, the regulations have to fulfill the policy, what each policy affords in the way of rights of students and staff. Now, I kept on the forefront the names of the policy, so that again, you could compare them and see that KEF seems to be a greater emphasis on curriculum, where KEC, although they both use the term library, one says library resources, one says library materials, instructional activities, or presentations. The library materials, instructional activities, or presentations occurs in the context of concerns, complaints about curriculum, where there's no mention of curriculum in KEC. And so KEF, which has a curricular focus, doesn't speak specifically in the policy to the rights of students, but does speak to the rights of teachers and other school officials. And so what that policy does is attempt to honor the rights of teachers and other school officials. And what it says is that the Board of Education recognizes the right of teachers and other school officials to design curriculum and to present curriculum materials and classroom activities or presentations that are aligned with state content standards and benchmarks. So not only does it recognize and attempt to honor that right, but it also reinforces that notion is that KEF is about materials that are presented to students, that all students are then subjected to unless there's some sort of opt-out option. KEC, on the other hand, doesn't refer to that, doesn't have that curricular language. And if you're talking about the choice, the non-curricular election by students of books in the library, this policy seems to track that that's what its focus was. And there you see the board's attempt through policy, again, a board where I believe even you, Mr. Frank, weren't on the board at this time.
No.
And so this precedes all of the board, and I do want to say that I believe the regulations precede all of the current administration who are involved in the developing of regulations. So we're talking about something that both the board and the administration inherited. The other thing I want to say about it too, just to mention this before I forget, is that we all know, if we've walked the walk, that until you live a policy and regulation, sometimes you don't realize whether it's, the extent to which it can be easily applied, or whether in fact it's unwieldy. I know there's been mention, I think by everybody, that it's unwieldy. So let's look at what the intent of the board was with regard to the policy, which the policies are actually pretty short and straightforward. That policy focuses on the rights of students and the rights of staff and attempts to honor both. And so with regard to students, it says, "The Board of Education is committed to protect the needs and rights of students to free access to many different types of print and non-print materials." That's the right that the board set out to protect, that any regulation would need to be designed to honor. The other right that the board set out to protect is the right of professional staff to select print and non-print materials supportive of the school district's educational goals. So Colin, I guess I can, I think I can do this, let's see.
Yes.
All right. So the other thing that I think is important to look at is what does the, what did the policy envision with regard to the right of the public to complain? As the complainants acknowledge, the regulations and the policies afford that right. And so let's look at it first in the context of KEF. Under KEF, it states that "The Board also recognizes the right of individuals and groups to present legitimate concerns and complaints about curriculum and/or library materials and instructional activities or presentations." So the right to bring that forward. KEC is a little bit more elaborate with regard to that. It says, "The Board recognizes that despite the care taken to select material for student and teacher use, occasional objections may be raised by community members, students, or school staff. In such instances, the principles of the freedom to read and professional responsibility of the staff should be defended." So again, it's balanced, an attempt actively by this policy to balance the rights that we just saw on the first page, that the board was attempting to protect and honor, and also afford this right to complain. It goes on, "The Board will not permit any individual or group to exercise censorship over library materials, but it recognizes that at times, a reevaluation of certain material may be desirable." And so, you know, one of the important things I think it is important to mention is what about parents in all of this? Because a complainant may or may not represent the views of some parents, all parents, any parents, for that matter. And so, and it may not be a parent, at least by the way this policy is written, it may not even be a parent complaining. And so let's look at what each of these policies attempted to do with regard to making sure that regardless of how the process proceeds, how are parents and their right to direct their own child's education addressed in this. And so what policy KEF makes clear, and again, I think these policies are pretty simple and straightforward, what policy KEF makes clear is that the board further recognizes the right of an individual parent to request in a timely fashion, an alternative assignment to curriculum materials, classroom activities, or presentations, which the parent finds objectionable. So regardless of the outcome of any concern or complaint, it doesn't negate the right of the parent under the policy KEF, which has a focus on curriculum. Again, you see the focus on curriculum here within this language, to make the objections and have those objections addressed in a proper way. Policy KEC, which, again, as you look at the language, it becomes more and more clear that KEC is that optional aspect of the library, where a student can choose not to check out a book, not to look at a book, or choose to check out that book. And policy KEC says that "The Board recognizes that the final authority as to what materials an individual student will be exposed to rests with the student's parents or guardians." So again, we see an attempt to separate and apart from however a complaint process proceeds and its outcome, to afford parents that right. The policy goes on, because obviously, if you're talking about materials that are optional, you've got competing rights. And so the policy says, "However, at no time will the wishes of one child's parents to restrict his or her reading or viewing of a particular item infringe on other parents' rights to permit their children to read or review the same material." Now I want to say that when you are looking at the totality of KEF, you see it's curricular. And so even though it uses library twice, KEF and KEC, I think it's important to recognize that library materials, some materials in the library are used in a curricular fashion. Library science is a science, and students are taught, and I think they have been, certainly since I was a child in the classroom, you're taught at all phases of your education, you know, how to pick a book, how to find it by title, how to find it by topic, how to find it by author. If you're researching a particular topic, how you explore those topics in the library, how you check it out, when you have to return it. That's library, that's the curriculum side of library. And if a librarian is delivering a lesson, that would be the curricular side, because all students in that class or that age group, that grade, would be subjected to that lesson. And so therefore, a challenge to that lesson would be appropriately KEF. But if you look at the totality of KEC, and what rights that the board is trying to navigate in policy KEC, that on the other hand, is the part of the library that is elective, that no student has to read that book. In fact, if I remember correctly, I believe that the record said that only one student in the history of the last book that was challenged had ever even checked out the book. And so that's the elective part of the library, that's non-curricular, that KEC is designed to address. So again, what I'm emphasizing here is what do the policies say, so that we can look at the next question, which is, do the regulations fulfill the policies or not, which is the requirement of regulations? So I wanted to briefly address this issue of the final decision maker. And actually, this is, my focus of this is really KEC and not so much KEF. But KEC says, "No question material shall be..." Because KEF doesn't directly address it in the policy itself. But KEC says, "No question material..." And again, this is the elective side of library. "No question material shall be removed from the school, except upon the recommendation of the committee, with the concurrence of the superintendent and the Board of Education." And so under KEC, a book stays on the shelf unless at all three levels, all three levels concur, that the book should go off the shelf. And so if you had a challenge to an elective book, and the committee said, "Take it off", then it would go, at least under this clause, to the superintendent, and only if the superintendent said, "Take it off," would it go to the board, and it would only come off if the board said, "Take it off." And so that's what policy KEC does, to balance the various rights that the policy is designed to protect. And so again, I think it's important that you read that final decision maker clause in light of the purposes that are set out in the policy, in light of the rights that the policy is attempting to address. So what about the route for filing a complaint under KECR? And here's where I think it gets complicated. And quite frankly, I think it got complicated for everybody. And I say that genuinely, that it was complicated for the complainants who filed their complaint and are now complaining under KE. I can only imagine that it was complicated for administration. Again, the regulations preceded their roles, and then complicated, obviously, as you heard tonight, for board members attempting to fulfill that role. And so what's interesting is, even though the complaint clearly was about an elective book and not a curricular book, the complainants, by regulation, are told under KECR that "Parents, students, staff, and/or community members have been provided a means to review and/or challenge library resources through other Board of Education policies, including KEF, concerns about curriculum, library materials, instructional activities, or presentations." And then the regulation actually references them over to that form. And so here's another, we don't necessarily know, and quite honestly, I don't know that it matters in terms of the point that, the concerns that I'm expressing right now. But administration gets then a complaint, and the complaint is on a KEF form. Both policies use the word "library materials." And so that then process gets directed through KEFR regulation. And it turns out that there are some significant conflicts between KEFR and KECR that need to be, I think, noted here. And also, not a clarification as to which of these regulations the process should proceed through, particularly in light of the conflicts. So when everyone, and I think at this point, at some level, there's been various acknowledgement that this was a difficult process. Hopefully, this helps everybody recognize some of the why. So what are the differences? And not even getting into whether they align with policy or not, what are some of the differences? So the committee selection. We are here because of a challenge to the committee selection. Because this was decided through KEFR, and I've isolated the pieces that I think are most relevant, but because this was decided under KEFR, there was an advisory review committee pool that had to be established. It says, "When a formal complaint has been filed, two advisory review committee pools shall be appointed to give and receive input about the issue under complaint. Each member of the LCPS Board of Education shall appoint to the pool parents of students who reside in the board member's voting district, and teachers from schools to whose student bodies include students residing in the board member's voting district." We heard Mr. Nolan tonight, in his comments, speak to that, about trying to figure out who was in his voting district, if they were a parent, and who, what teachers taught at his schools, which would be a very different thing from, obviously, their physical address. It goes on, "Teachers appointed to the pools shall be highly qualified in the content area under complaint." Now, that's an odd sentence if you're talking about an elective library book. How do you fulfill that piece? Again, KEFR, really not about the elective piece at all, but about the curricular piece. And yet, that was the process that this complaint was proceeding through because of the form that was filled out, which may or may not have been the direct result of the fact that the beginning of KECR directs you to KEFR. So it goes on. Then there's a review committee, and it says, "Voting members of the committee shall be three randomly selected parents and four randomly selected teachers from the appropriate elementary or secondary pool described above," which we all know that that process of randomization from the committee pool did occur. So KECR stands in interesting contrast to that. It says, "For each request for reconsideration of library resources," which that's the title of KEC and KECR, "an eight-person review committee shall be established and a meeting scheduled within 30 working days of the receipt of the formal complaint. The committee shall be chaired by the K-12 library specialist in the Department of Instruction, who shall be a non-voting member of the committee. Voting members of the committee shall consist of the principal or designee of the school where the complaint originated." And here we have very different language now. Here's where it deviates significantly. Three randomly selected teachers who teach at the school where the complaint originated, and three randomly selected parents or guardians whose children attend the school where the complaint originated. So had it been a KECR process, it would have been a very different selection of committee members than it had it been a KEFR process. And of course, it got filed on a KEFR form, and that got honored, and that process got followed. They are different processes. Then the third one is the principal of the school, and I'm, sorry, President Tenorio, I'm trying to get, or read this. Let me go to my hard copy here.
Do you want me to read it for you?
Sure. Sure.
So C says, "The principal of the school where the complaint originated shall be responsible for the random selection of the committee members specified above."
So again, different processes. And why? Who knows? And why one redirected to the other without any kind of determination of which it fit, without any distinction between what is the difference between library resources in KEC and library materials, instructional activities, or presentations in KEF? But I think that if you look at the intent of the two, one is the elective and one is the curricular, but neither regulation set up a routing process. So that's one of our first problems. We also, I think, need to consider a possible conflict with a collective bargaining agreement. Now, the collective bargaining agreement is a contract. It supersedes board policy. It's a contract that when we enter into it, we have to abide by it regardless of what policy may say. Now, I say "possible conflict." I have not talked to the union. That's not my role. But I think that the board needs to consider tonight this possible conflict, and that the board has concerns that there may in fact be a conflict. Then resolving that conflict before further complaints are filed is going to be important because it is a contract. It does supersede policy. And I do want to say too, and I appreciate this, I think that Ms. Smith and Mr. Garcia have said, made comments in public comment, and as part of their complaint, that they anticipate that there may be more complaints. And so part of why I think this presentation is important for your thought is in anticipation that there may be more complaints, and that if there are problems, if the board agrees that there are problems, then those problems need to be addressed so that those problems aren't being carried forward. And so that is why I'm bringing this attention, this to your attention. So how is it that there might be a possible conflict with the CBA? I think that where the greatest conflict or potential conflict arrives is KEF, which again, KEF was the process that was followed. And it says, "Each member of the LCPS Board of Education shall appoint to the pool teachers from schools whose student bodies include students residing in the board member's voting district." So it doesn't even talk about volunteers. I mean, you all have applied, for example, your finance committee... I mean, not your finance committee, your audit committee policy, where it describes who you're recruiting onto it as volunteers. And at least from what we heard from respondents this evening, you know, they weren't forcing anybody to be on the committee. They sought volunteers. But the language of the regulation says that it's an appointment by the board. KECR, which was not the process that was followed, but has similar language, "Voting members of the committee," that's also mandatory in nature, "Voting members of the committee shall consist of," as we already talked about, "three randomly selected teachers. The principal of the school where the complaint originated shall be responsible for the random selection of the committee members specified above." So again, I said earlier that was more a concern of KEF, but now I say, "Look at KEC. They both are mandatory in nature." And yet, the collective bargaining agreement says, "The association president," that's the NEA Association, "shall be notified of the formation of all district committees." And it's the NEA that shall appoint all certified employee representatives to any such committees. So that has to be reconciled. Whether anyone likes it or not, until these policies are resolved, that has to be reconciled. There needs to be a conversation with the union to understand how they view that language and how to reconcile it with the policy. The regulations need to fulfill the policy and not violate any contractual obligations that the district has. So again, that's an issue. I will say that that entire paragraph of the CBA, it's not entirely clear whether it would be ultimately one representative of the union that they would select, or whether it would be all certified employee representatives. But that needs to be worked out with the union so that that's not violated. So what about conflict with policy? So I've already pointed out the KEC. It says, "No question material shall be removed unless there's three levels of concurrence." So at any point in time, let's say that for some reason, the committee said, "Pull the book," and the complainant decided not to appeal it, then the book would stay. If it was appealed to the superintendent, and the superintendent said, "Pull the book," then it would stay unless appealed. If it got appealed to the board, and the board said, "Keep the book," then under KEC, the presumption is the book stays on the shelf unless all three levels concur. And again, I think when I look at that, that that confirms the totality of that policy, which is, it's different because it's elective, where KEF doesn't have that elective component to it, other than if parents opt out for their child. And so you look at KECR in terms of the conflict, and it does something very different. Instead of this three-level concurrence, otherwise the book stays on the shelf, it has the superintendent altering the committee's decision only if he finds it to be clearly erroneous. And then I guess if he disagrees with the decision but doesn't find it clearly erroneous, then under KECR, unlike KEFR, then the superintendent is left with the decision of, should he appeal the decision? And so it says, "The complaint or the complainant or the superintendent, if not satisfied with the committee's decision, may appeal the decision to the LCPS Board of Education by submitting to the Associate Superintendent of Instruction a written letter which must be received within 10 working days of receiving a copy of the written decision." So I think all you have to do is compare the two columns to see that KECR does not fulfill KEC in this regard. So I'm trying to remember why I put this on here. Let's see, the voting members. I think we already discussed it.
May I say, I think it's just to summarize everything you just said.
I think possibly so. If I need to go back to it, I will. Voting members of the committee. I think it really is just a chance for you to look at those possible conflicts down the road. So I guess that was my last slide. I stand for questions.
That's it. Yes. So question. So the item from the collective bargaining unit, is it possible that it came about after these policies?
Mr. Frank, that's highly possible. That's highly possible.
Right. And then, you know, unfortunately, it never went back and redid the policies and the regulations.
Right. Or recognize that, right, actually, there's not any way of... You would not have, under those regulations or the policies, the policy would require involvement by certified staff. So you're right. It would need to be reconciled. And it didn't get reconciled. And why, historically, we don't know. And it also may very well, Mr. Frank, be a function of an omission that never got noticed because it's not been a policy that's been... And regulation that's been heavily utilized.
Exactly. Right.
These are things that get identified when you use them.
Exactly. Right. Didn't know there was a problem until there was a problem. Okay.
You have the floor. Any other questions?
No. That was, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Ms. Court? No questions. Thank you.
I don't necessarily have questions, other than maybe at some point wanting to share with the board how I felt like, how we went through that policy, that experience.
Okay. Then, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So looking at the next agenda item, 3A. It's called Discussion and Possible Action, Including to Direct Administration to Revise KEF-R and KEC-R to Include a New Process By Which Advisory Review Committee Members Are Chosen Pending Any Changes to Policies KEF and KEC. So I'm going to use that as an opportunity to just open this up to discussion, if that's okay, and kind of see where we go with it.
I think, you know, we certainly should have a discussion about this and...
Well, I wanted to share my own experience.
Okay. Sure.
Thanks. So as Ms. Gallegos was going over policy KEC and KEF, it reminded me of, towards the beginning of the process, KRWG asked me to go over because Mr. Garcia and Ms. Smith had been reaching out to media, and I guess they wanted to hear from myself or someone from the district. And when I went over, I went with the printout of KEFR to explain it. And if you go back to the website, I tell them, like, "This is a very elaborate process. Like, I'd have to memorize these steps in order to explain it on the radio." And then I mentioned also, "Well, we have this other policy, KEC, that's also about library." And I remember feeling so confused about reading KEC and thinking, "I really like the language of this policy, but we're doing KEFR, so does that mean it aligns with KEF policy?" And I could never get over the idea that when we were selecting teachers, that they had to be qualified in that content area, and that didn't make sense to me because this was a library book that a kid could pick. And it was not a math book. It wasn't a science book. So that was one of the, for me, conundrums of like, what does this mean? What does this mean for how I interpret this and put it into action? There were some printouts or screenshots from the IPRA request on your documentation, Ms. Smith and Mr. Garcia. And you're looking at, again, Facebook, like, people's Facebook profiles. I just don't see the relevance of what people are doing on their Facebook, on their social But I do think that I wanted people who were, like, open-minded, who were very thoughtful of looking at something and not being quick to reaction. Secondly, the parents living in our district got really hard because we would reach out... People would think that, like, okay, Mr. Nolan's at Mayfield, so that he should basically have any parent whose kid goes to Mayfield. Except, a lot of those parents or families live in my district. And so it was very confusing to a lot of people of who to reach out to. And I didn't know until the day of this committee, that they had the hearing here, when one of the parents showed up on the committee for someone else's district when they were living in my district, or I had been told, they had told me they came from my district. Could I have said something and say, "Hey, they're not, that's not according to, you know, the regulation? Just thought it's not a big deal." It wasn't big enough for me to have to say, like, "Well, replace that parent." That parent was a dissenting vote. I didn't care. It was very difficult to do. And even just from one day to the next, just like, what step are we on? What step are we going to? Looking now, having it side by side, it's... I felt like we had just been pushed into, well, now we have... Nobody was doing the pushing, right? It is just the timing of it. When you submit the complaint, it just starts the clock. So there wasn't time to kind of sit and think of, like, what are we really doing? But looking at it side by side, and thank you, Ms. Gallegos, for really taking a fine-toothed comb through it, it makes so much more sense to finally see it and know that the reason for KEF, from my understanding, is for curriculum. And for KEC would have been for anything that's... What was the word she used?
Optional.
Elective.
Elective. That was it. Thank you. So I guess that's what I have to say, is that maybe there may be complaints in here, and yet there were some things that just happened organically. Like, there was a screenshot of a message with me and a parent, and I didn't know who they were communicating with on the other side. I just know that I ran into her husband, and we had a good conversation, and then I said, "Oh, maybe one of them, but they have a son at Mayfield. Maybe one of them would be interested." That's all it was. Anyway, that's all I have to say about my experience with that. I do have a lot to say about the policies, but I'd like to open this to either one of you.
Ms. Court? So I was just going to go straight to the policies, if that's okay with you. I echo everybody's frustration with finding people to serve on this committee. It really was a cumbersome, it was a cumbersome thing to do. I think the real issue is that policy KEC, that this complaint clearly lies under, should not have had, should not have told you all, and this is what we had, to complete form KEF. And as you saw, as Ms. Gallegos showed us, there's a very different process for selecting those committees, which might have alleviated a lot of what's happening right now. And so I think clearly we need to look at a policy review and definitely look at the regulation and make sure that we're aligning. It's a little crazy that KEC regulation happened before the policy actually came through. I just wanted to share with you a couple of words that Bonnie Bota, who was president of the board at the time, shared with me. And she says, "My philosophy of a school board is that the schools belong to the community. And within the community, all viewpoints exist and have a right to be heard. And the schools must find a reasonable solution, such as a review board. And sometimes the district has to proactively determine the most common viewpoints," which she felt they did at the time, thus these policies that exist. And I thought that was, yeah, schools belong to the community and are reflective of all viewpoints. So, thank you.
I wanted to add another confusing part to it, was that...
For so many.
Students who go to MVLA and RGPI and Arrowhead seem to be like this mixture of, from any district. So it's a lot harder sometimes to understand, where are we picking them from the school they go to or from where they live? And some, for board members, we didn't discuss, like, how to ask that question, you know? We weren't, I don't think we were, like, reading the policy. Some, I read the policy, like, letter to letter, but I think it could get really confusing sometimes.
So thank you for that, because both of those schools are a district too. And it was, I was like, I don't know what to do. And sometimes schools or students who don't live in that district are going to another school, which just creates a whole nother ball of wax.
So that's something that can be looked at moving forward.
So to me, clearly, the way we're forced to pick an oversight committee under KEF needs to be pretty much put into the trash. I mean, it's just, you know, it's too cumbersome. I mean, I'm so glad I didn't have to come up with 16 people. I mean, I had a hard time, you know, just trying to find somebody for, one person for the audit committee, you know, that's a qualified financial person. I mean, I did, I talked to one person, and they turned me down. Unfortunately, we were able to do that. But so, we need to come up with another way to select this committee, because, you know, we have to have the committee, but it has to be something that's not burdensome and something that we all fully understand and the public understands. And so, you know, I'm in total support, you know, of requesting the administration to come up with this. The thing that, so, but I don't know that I like the idea that we'd be pending changes in our policy, because if we change the policy, then we have to go through all those readings. And that would really delay the whole process. And so... And so, maybe, the policies do need to be revised, but maybe, I don't know.
I thought they would, I'm sorry, I just assumed that the regulation would, if we act for, asked for changes, would happen as needed.
Right.
President Tenorio?
Yeah.
I think we should change the regulation as soon as possible, and we can do that. We don't need to go through a bunch of readings, it's just something that's done by the administration.
Okay.
And then at some later date, you know, I don't know, a few months from now, let's go back and look at the policies and see if, you know, we want to update them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Frank. Ms. Court?
Sorry, that helps answer my question. I was going to say, do you see problems with the policy, or is it more the regulation that you're worried about at this point?
Well, I do see problems with the policy. Okay, but, but they're not, they can wait.
Gotcha.
What I think can't wait is changing the regulation.
Yes, sir.
Particularly the way we select the committee
I agree.
To review the complaint.
President Tenorio?
Ms. Gallegos?
If I may, just because we're talking about, I think, language interpretation as far as the action item, I read that pending changes to the policy is that if the board chooses to direct administration to revise the regulations, those regulations would have to conform to existing policy, and that could be right away, because those regulations wouldn't have to go through multiple readings. The pending change in policy simply means that those regulations would only be in effect for as long as the existing policies are in effect. So if, for example, and this is important, because it's been publicly said many times, that the board's current schedule for policy review includes KEC and KEF. And so if the board starts, for example, the first, second, and third reading of a change to the policy, the regulations would be whatever regulations implement the current policy until a new, pending adoption of a new policy. And then at that time, if there are changes to the policy, the administration would have to come up with new regulations to implement the new policy, so that we don't have that date problem that you saw on the slide, where the regulations postdate the policy. So the pending language is pending any changes. Once changes are made to policy after their three readings, then the regulations would need to change as well. But the regulations can change immediately if, in fact, they conflict, if the board believes that they conflict with current policy. The regulations need to align with current policy.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, so I'm going to just keep noted this, that you can either use the word "conform" to existing policy or comply with. Any other discussion that you'd like to have, based on the information that was presented I feel that there was a lot to unpack, specifically from legal counsel. One of the ones that I hadn't thought about was collective bargaining agreement.
Right, me neither.
Yeah, so that will be, you know, just the other day, when was it, when we had Finance Subcommittee, and somebody asked, hey, you know, did we remember to include the union? And then we had to kind of
Yep.
Go back and do that, so.
Absolutely.
Can we amend the possible action to include, that it be consistent with our collective bargaining agreement?
Yes.
If we're going to move this.
And President Tenorio, I, there was some, it was a little bit vague, so I do think that we need some, goodness, I've lost all my vocabulary, but we need some clarification on the CBA and the role that the union has in appointing their employees.
So that would probably go under regulation, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Because that's not clear, it wasn't clear to me.
It wasn't mentioned in the existing regulations.
Exactly.
Okay.
It's not in the proposed motion.
No.
So I think we need to insert it.
Yeah, and I have some ideas for a series of actions to kind of just, one small step at a time. So I'm going to make a motion, and I'll need a second, to direct administration to revise KEF-R and KEC-R to include a new process by which Advisory Review Committee members are chosen, pending any changes by the board to policies KEF and KEC. Second. Okay, so that is made by Tenorio, seconded by Ms. Court, and I'm going to take roll. Mr. Frank?
So, you know, what I was, you know.
I'm going, well, if this helps at all, I was taking notes of everything that we discussed.
Okay, so what about the collective bargaining complaint?
That's going to come in another motion.
Okay. Okay, well, then, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Ms. Court?
Yes.
And myself, yes, that motion passes 3-0. I will enter, I will make a motion to direct the administration that their revised KEF-R and KEC-R regulations comply with existing policies KEF and KEC, and with current collective bargaining agreements.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you. So let's move by Tenorio, seconded by Mr. Frank. Mr. Frank, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Court?
Yes.
Myself, yes, that motion passes 3-0. I'll give you a chance. I will entertain a third motion to direct the administration that their revised KEF-R and KEC-R regulations be streamlined with one another, except to the extent necessary to fulfill the intent of policies KEF and KEC.
Second that.
Can you repeat that, though?
I will entertain a third motion, so I will need someone to make the motion
Oh.
And someone to second. To direct the administration that their revised KEF-R and KEC-R regulations are streamlined with one another, except to the extent necessary to fulfill the intent of policies KEF and KEC.
Thank you.
So moved.
And I will second.
This move by Madam Court, and seconded by Mr. Frank. Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Ms. Court?
Yes.
And myself, yes, that motion passes 3-0. Okay, I will, I'm going to make a move. I will move to direct the administration to develop and publish their revised regulations no later than February 14th, 2024, and this will allow 10 full business days to get it done, Mr. Ruiz. So I need a second.
I'll second that. Can we have some discussion on that, though?
Um, yeah.
Well, can, is that reasonable? Can the administration fulfill that motion?
President Tenorio, members of the board, yes. We can, we can work on that within, by the 14th.
Ms. Gallegos, if more than 14 days is needed, do we have some flexibility?
President Tenorio, obviously, we've got the 72-hour requirement, you know, in terms of the administration seeking an extension, but you could build into a motion, and maybe you can discuss with Mr. Ruiz what you might build into a motion, that if they, if they determine that fulfilling, fulfilling the directives necessitates additional time, then the board will give them X number of additional business days. So in other words, it would need to be a unilateral, it wouldn't be possible for the board to come back realistically. But I think you could add to that motion, that if the, if the administration, through the superintendent, determines that to fulfill the directives of the board, it is necessary to have additional time, then the board will give an automatic extension of five business days, or whatever number of days you determine.
If I may, President Tenorio, members of the board, I'd ask that that would be considered.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. So I can change the motion to direct the administration to develop and publish their revised regulation no later than February 14th, 2024. This will allow 10 full business days to get it done. If the superintendent feels that more time is needed, he will give notice to the board, and we will give a five-day allowance.
Automatically?
So with that, I move as stated.
And I will second.
Thank you. Good. Let's move by Ms. Tenorio, and seconded by Mr. Frank. Mr. Frank, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Court?
Yes.
And myself, yes, that motion passes 3-0. Moving on to Agenda Item 3B, it says Discussion and Possible Action, including to disband the existing 2023-2024 Advisory Review Committee pool chosen under existing KEF-R. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay. You have the floor.
Thank you, President Tenorio. If we were to disband the existing committee, then are we looking at a committee that would be formed, I guess we don't even have that regulation yet, but a regulation KEC, which is a totally different thing than KEF? Yeah.
Well, what we just passed was for the district to come up with something that aligns the two, KEC and KEF.
Right.
A new process.
Gotcha.
Which, in which Advisory Review Committee members are chosen, but we don't know
That's true.
In what fashion.
So this is just to, I'm sorry, Tanara, please continue.
I think, I think that there's an opportunity here to really look at the gaps that happened under KEFR, and to look at where KEC may be weak. And I only mean that in terms of how, when you start writing it and you question it, and you compare it to what else is in the, across the United States, in New Mexico, what does legal counsel have, you know? I just think that there's a lot to have to review in order for them to come up with something that will be, and because it's so fresh in our minds, what we've been through, that they will make something that's more foolproof.
And in that, my question was, so, because this committee was supposed to be for the rest of the school year, then it disbands that committee, and they no longer are obligated to serve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
Which would last until the end of May.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
So, I mean, if we're going to come up with something new, we need to erase the board and have a clean slate. So I'm in support of this item.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion, or would you like me to entertain a motion?
Um, you can go ahead.
Because we kind of have it in red, but I can re-say it. I will entertain a motion to disband the existing 2023-2024 Advisory Review Committee pool chosen under existing KEF-R.
And I'll second that, or do I have to move it? I will move it.
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Seconded by Madam Court, and I think you just voted yes. How do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay.
You're on it.
I voted before I was asked.
I vote yes, 3-0. Okay, here's a new one, here's another motion. Looking under the problems that we faced with the complaint form, and how if you filled out the complaint form, KEF something 1, E1, I don't know what it is, that it wasn't clear which policy it went to, KEC or KEF. So this motion is to clarify, any new KEF complaints will be handled under the revised KEF-R complaint procedure and committee review.
President Tenorio, those are to be determined, yes.
Ms. Gallegos, I have a question. Right now, they have this, the same form is being used, the same complaint form for KEC and KEF. By us voting to ask you to revise those regulations, does it do anything to the complaint form?
So, President Tenorio, first of all, I think in terms of the concerns about the complaint form, I think the earlier action to ask the administration to revise the regulations to conform to the policies, I think that's going to take care of the complaint form issue.
Okay.
And actually, the, as I was hearing the motion that you were formulating, I'm thinking that, based on the conversations already have, that that goes without saying, that the committee's been disbanded, and any, any new complaint, if it gets filed tomorrow, is going to have to wait till those regulations get issued, because then it will be under the new regulation.
Yeah, because I was, I felt like I had to, like, add more to this.
Right, I think, I think it's probably redundant, given what the board has already, already established through its, the actions that are taken. So as I'm understanding the board's decision now, the committee is disbanded, and so of course, any new complaint would have to be under the new regulation, and based on what the board has already decided, that new regulation deadline for issuance is 10 business days, unless the superintendent determines that additional time is needed, and if he so states, then it will be an automatic five-day business day extension, which means three weeks. And so, three weeks before new regulations are issued, and when those new regulations are issued, then those processes, whether it's KEFR or whether it's KEC-R, will be followed.
Okay. I'm looking forward to it aligning more with the policies.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to Agenda Item 3C. I'm going to read it. If the board directs that KEF-R and KEC-R be revised, Discussion and Possible Action, including to allow the new Advisory Review Committee to review the record of any committee review hearings held in 2023-2024, and make a recommendation to the superintendent based on the record for decision by the superintendent, with the opportunity of the complainants to appeal the superintendent's decision to the board. So I'm opening this up to discussion.
It's a lot of words, I need to read it.
President Tenorio?
Yes.
If I, if I may here, and this is based on what actions the board has already taken, I just want to say that, given that the board has directed that the entirety of both regulations be reviewed, and that they be streamlined to the extent, to the extent consistent with policies, and that any conflicts be resolved, I think there's some limits now to what the board can do under this action item. It's, it's, the way that the action item is written, it's tracking the old KEFR that has the recommendation being made to the superintendent, and then the opportunity of the complainants to appeal the superintendent's decision to the board. We don't know exactly what those regulations will look like. But I do think that what's before the board under this action item is to whether, whether to allow any complaints that have already been heard this year, which we know and recognize there's one, whether to allow that complaint to be resubmitted under the new regulations.
Okay.
Right.
And that would be whether, whether it be appropriate under KEC-R or KEFR, I think that if we're talking about a book that's elective, it would be KEC and not KEF.
Right, and there's something in the regulation that doesn't allow resubmission of a complaint within six months or something like that, or at the end of the school year, I have to read it again, but it's a pretty long period, it would be not this school year. But you're saying that might change under our new regulations, and therefore it's possible?
So, President Tenorio, may I address the question?
Yes, Ms. Gallegos.
So, President Tenorio, Mr. Frank, what I would say is that if this board determines that there's actual conflict between the regulation and the policy, such that the regulation didn't fulfill the policy, then I think that the board has the authority to correct that by choosing to correct that by choosing to allow a complainant who fell under a regulation that did not comply with policy to, to have some form of another opportunity. I think that's within the board's, board's discretion, not arbitrarily
Correct.
but, but because of what the board has observed today, and what, what has been the basis of its other determinations, that there was a problem with, with the regulations not fully complying with the policies and possibly the CBA.
I mean, I can see in hindsight that we probably should not have used KEFR.
For sure.
Can, can we simplify this motion a little bit? I mean, it seems to be, get very specific toward the end, and, and just
So what I have is, I move to allow Sarah Smith and Juan Garcia to have their August 10th, 2024 complaint regarding a Mayfield High School library book to be considered under the revised KEC-r procedure and committee review.
So, I think that sounds fair. I mean, you know, it just didn't go well, and, and our complainants are obviously not, they, they don't feel that they've been treated fairly, whether they were or not, you know, we're not to judge, but we know how they feel. And to give them another shot at this, to me, sounds like the fair thing to do. So I would support that.
Okay, so I made the move, motion, I made the motion. Would you like to second?
I would second, yes. Sorry, I discussed it the wrong time.
So, just a little bit of discussion, so we're basically taking, so it's KEC, the regulation for KEC, which is C15, that the decision of the Board of Education on Appeal shall be final, and a formal complaint shall not be submitted before six months or a year, I can't remember which one it is. So we're basically saying, because we are taking, we are revising the regulation, that that no longer exists, basically? And do we need to be that specific?
We find faults with the application with the
Gotcha.
regulation, with the regulation itself, because we, it was
Yes.
You know, it was flawed for the purpose, the intent was
Yes.
not for a library book, for an elective library book, it was for curriculum.
Yes. Okay, I just wanted some clarification. Thank you. Thank you.
And President Tenorio, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Gallegos.
I, I do think it's important that the board take its vote, not based on just giving a second bite of the apple, that's disruptive to the process. It, it really would need to be based on a concern that the regulation didn't honor the policy. And, and so there, and that's what the administration has been directed to do, is draft a regulation that fixes the identified problems, so that it, it implements the policy and implements the CBA. And then also addresses what, President Tenorio, you mentioned earlier in your comments you were concerned about, which is the misdirection of the regulation from a KEC process to a KEF process because of that form. And so when that's cleaned up, then, then it gives, and they may choose not to refile when they see the regulations, but it gives them the opportunity to refile and get the KEC, the, the elective non-curricular complaint heard through a regulation that complies with policy.
So maybe not being as specific in that motion?
Okay, what would you recommend?
Really, really sorry you asked me that, hang on.
President Tenorio, I think if you restate the motion, I think the motion is fine, I just wanted to be clear that this isn't about, should not be about just giving someone a second chance for a second chance sake, because they didn't like the outcome.
Okay, then it, I think that's fine.
Restate it?
Uh-huh.
Yes, please. I motion to allow Sarah Smith and Juan Garcia to have their August 10th, 2024 complaint regarding a Mayfield High School library book to be reconsidered under the revised KEC-r procedure and committee review. And Mr. Frank seconded it.
Okay.
2023, as, as revised. Okay, so I will do a roll call.
Okay.
Mr. Frank?
I vote yes.
Ms. Court?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that motion passes 3-0. We have gotten through the agenda, and now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, second?
This move by Ms. Court, seconded by Mr. Frank, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, the motion passes.